Okay. Call this meeting to order. Those willing and able to stand, please stand for the...
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions, which are 3.1.1, resolution requiring the tally of write-in votes only if write-in votes are greater than the ballot's candidate's total votes, and 3.1.2, set meeting date to canvass election results, November 10th through the 17th. So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Do we vote? We're voting, right? Sorry, I'm not...
No.
Okay, motion is seconded, all we need.
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Public forum?
No.
No? Okay. Presentation?
None.
Okay. Consent agenda, any discussion on items in the consent agenda? Not, I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Financials, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie?
Budget year-to-date. Looks fine, we're at 22 percent. Last year at this time, we're at 23 percent.
Okay. Approved treasures report for September?
Okay. Cash balance is $9.4 million. Last year was $9.1 million.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the treasures report for September.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the treasures report for September, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Approved regular bills for October. Anybody have any questions?
I didn't see anything that...
I didn't either.
No? Okay, I need a motion to approve the regular bills. So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve regular bills for October. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approved high school activity bills for October. Any questions on those? No. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the high school activity bills for October. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Approved the 2023 aid bonds treasure report for September.
Okay, this is the new bond money. At the current time, we have $2,888,038.38 at 21 cents.
Okay, any questions for Jackie? No? Motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Board forum. Any board reports or updates?
I haven't had any.
I haven't had any meetings, no.
Have you had it? There's not been any meetings, has there?
No. We haven't had them.
Okay, administrators' report? Superintendent's board report?
Right, few items to share. You'll notice an attached enrollment report for your review. Sitting right about where we had projected or anticipated we would be in terms of our student enrollment count. So again, that's good on the part of Jackie with budgeting and preparation. So thank you, Jackie, and working through that as she did. A couple other things that I wanted to share, some facilities updates. We had a preliminary meeting with our architects here. I guess it's been about a week ago. Todd was part of that, as well as multiple staff members walked through, met with. They brought their engineering team. We also had the folks from Bolton and Mink that were here talking about the track and field facility and the replacement of that. We spent some time talking about the schedule on that one, in particular because of the window of time that we have to complete that project. It's roughly three months. So they said if you figure May 15th, you would be in by August 15th to the field. We've looked at our schedule, and it looks like we have our last scheduled event on May 10th, so we could effectively start construction out there on that site in May 13th. Obviously targeting a little bit earlier than August 13th because of any weather delays or whatever the case might be. But Rick Zolner has already started, Mr. Zolner's already started reaching out to, I believe, excuse me, RTR to see about having our track practices wrap up there for the last couple of weeks of May. There would certainly be some transportation involved, but that would afford us the opportunity to get that work done prior to the start of the football season next fall. So that's probably the biggest news worth reporting in terms of the schedule and how that's looking like and shaping up. So right now, we're kind of tentatively looking at that May 13th as a potential start. There's going to be some borings of soil done in the next couple of weeks and some surveying done of the site so that that all can get put together in a plan. And we're going to engage some students in helping with some of the layout of the colors and whatnot of the field. So again, trying to encourage and foster some involvement from our students that will ultimately be using that field. Want you to put it on your radar, mark your calendars, that the school board convention, if you're interested in attending, is, there's Phase 1 training, January 9th, Phase 2 training, January 10th, and then the evening of January 10th is pre-conference activities for the convention. And then January 11th and 12th is the Balkan Convention up in the Twin Cities. Always a good event to go to. You learn a ton, you get presentations from multiple school districts across the state, other vendors as well. And it's just a great learning event for board members. We do have the special election, as we know, coming up. So again, that's just on the radar for everybody. I'll be joining Kiwanis Club, wanted to let the board members know that, that I'm getting involved with the Kiwanis Club as part of the community involvement. And then just wanted to share that we did fail our search for the curriculum director position. And I know that that's something that the three administrators have met. We've talked to some folks from the Service Cooperative to find some help. And right now, we're looking at possibly a sixth assignment for a couple of volunteers to provide a support with the assessment coordination in the district. That's really the big concern that we have, most pressing. Long-term though, and I share this just as a visual representation, this is the print-off from the School Boards Association on everything that we're required to do over these next couple of years with the passage of all the legislation that happened this last year. And there are quite a number of them that deal specifically with the REED Act, which was the cornerstone piece. And that's where we've talked, trying to ensure that we have the support that we need to make that happen the way that it needs to, to insert, to ensure that we're meeting all the compliance factors, let alone all the other requirements that are part of it. And I drew a bright pink line because these are, anything that has a check mark here before, that bright line really is something that we've focused on as a team. I'll pass this around so you can see what we're working on and kind of get an idea of the requirements that we'll be really shouldering into. But again, that's why that extra role is really important. So we'll just move through that accordingly. And then just to mention that you see here as well, a social media report card for the board members to see. This is something that, again, we are seeing really positive feedback with our involvement, with our social media partner. And that's been very positive when you think about the average monthly reach at 21,000, just about 22,000. And this is really in part because of the work of our teachers. Our teachers are providing information, giving pictures, and helping build awareness of what we're doing relative to our social media presence. And we know that's where a lot of people do go for information and involvement. Finally, I'm just gonna give a quick shout-out to Larry Fennigle and the folks at Ludoff Bus Service. As we know, we had the bus accident. And the response was incredible from so many different people in so many different ways. And I just can't say enough how much we appreciated the loneliness of the response and the responsiveness of everybody involved. And the blessing that we had that nobody was actually hurt. So again, I'm very thankful. Thanks for the administrators stepping up and shouldering some of that responsibility as well.
When I heard a lot of positives from parents, that they were very happy with how the information was put out, that they got the phone call before the... Most people even knew that it had happened, which is good. Because then you kind of squash any rumors, and that's good. More information that you can get out, the better.
Chain of command.
Yeah.
And they'll all attest that I was pretty frustrated that we didn't get something out faster.
Well, yeah.
But I agree, yep, it went well. It went well, so. Yeah.
Couple things that I have with your discussion there. Like the football thing can have the first couple games away, just to allow a little bit of a cushion there to... I mean, is that something that Rick could do as he's setting up his schedule?
That's a great suggestion. We haven't talked about that, and I don't know if that's...
Well, but you got it, Mother Nature controls you.
It's a great idea, yeah.
You just well-plan for that, and hopefully you've got an extra week to do the little things to get it ready to go.
Exactly. Well, law of averages for as dry as this summer was. And it sounds like it's gonna be a dry winter, relatively speaking.
And then the other thing was, what were they thinking on taking out all their trees?
We haven't talked very much further about that. I do know that there was a concern about taking them out before having established something else. But I know at the same time, the concern is if you wait that long, that old growth is gonna die out because those pine trees are looking pretty tough.
But I think as a group, we should look at that, investigate that, and get a game plan so we're prepared for them if we gotta move in some...
Yeah.
Or do something, because that's the time to take them out, if you've got excavators there to do it.
Absolutely. Equipment to move it all.
Clean that out and start fresh.
Well, it's already a mess. I mean, it's already...
Yeah. It's gonna be getting better, though.
You got to keep traffic going.
Right, so you might as well...
So it's something I think we should investigate.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay. You're done? Okay. Principals' board report?
Hi, from the high school standpoint, tomorrow is Make-up Picture Day. We also have Humanity launch tomorrow for all high school kids, grades 9 through 12, which is character building, responsibility, decision-making. It is an outside group coming in. They were here the last couple of years, I guess. But I've heard really good things about them. They're in the gym. Juniors and seniors are first, and then 9th and 10th grade, so we had to adjust the schedule for lunches a little bit. Homecoming, it seems like a long time ago.
Yeah, it does.
It really hasn't even been a month yet. For the first year here, I think that it went really well. We had a good reception from parents in the community and students. From what I've been told, that the parade, yeah, I think it will grow more and more each year. I think that will be really good. Also, today, Jennifer was there. We met with Josh, our technology person, and my administrative assistant. And Jennifer's with a new picture company instead of Lifetouch. And we did sign a contract with them. They, I think that the, all the stakeholders will be very happy with it. They are less than half the cost of Lifetouch, which Lifetouch really isn't a picture company anymore. They're, you know, they're owned by...
Shutterfly. Shutterfly.
Shutterfly, there we go, thank you. So they give a lot more options for parents. Parents can go back forever and get pictures of their kids. So just go online, and they can do that. They are less than half the price. We were, as a school, getting 10% commission from sales, or excuse me, 2% from Lifetouch. We're getting 10% from them. They're providing some equipment for us and some other photographs for, and neat things for staff and for the offices. So I think that that'll go a long ways, and I think people will be happy with them. And for the high school, that's it right now, high school and middle school.
Good evening. We had National 4H Week, so we had a bunch of people come down from 4H and share a lot about, give a good presentation, what is 4H all about, how can you sign up? We had National Fire Prevention Week. The younger students, a fire truck came in, and so they got to learn about fire safety and all the ins and outs of a fire truck. We did have a fire drill that was put on by the fire department with that. We had National School Bus Safety Week. Ludoff Bussing came, and the kids all got bus safety. For Indigenous Peoples' Day, we had a lot of good literature for books, picture books for our students, some videos, as well as Mrs. Spear put on a whole bunch of items in a showcase that students and staff could check out. Today, we kicked off Red Ribbon Week. We had flex areas assemblies with Mrs. Matthews. We have dress-up days for each day this week. Our first Terrific Kid Program will be held this Friday. The Flu Shot Clinic is also held this Friday, too. Just like Dr. Willard talked about, the REED Act, so my literacy team, we are really diving in and looking at that. So today, we had our literacy team meeting, and we're looking at the REED Act and everything that that kind of entails. And I guess I'm really excited to share that we're kind of ahead of the game, just having letters. We are gonna be finishing that up this school year with all of our staff, and that's kind of a big thing. There's some school districts that haven't even heard about letters, and what is that? So I feel like we're really ahead of the game. Our assessment piece that we're using is FastBridge, and that's one component that the state is looking at that we have to implement, and we have already been implementing that. We have our literacy lead already stated. We're looking at different curriculum already. I sent each one of my leadership team members to grade-alike meetings to kind of learn some more information. That was really beneficial for them. And then just our leadership team and what we're doing and looking across, you know, the multi-system of support and what we're doing in the classrooms. And then we'll be looking at some new social studies curriculum. Any questions?
Todd, did you want to mention the signage as well? Something that all the board members have in front of you, and what that's about?
Yes, thank you very much. And I did see that sitting here, too. We were, I was recently at a law conference for principals, and one of the things that they talked about, this is one that we pulled off the internet that we're gonna order, is that they need to be prominently displayed. And it says prominently displayed, and then it says inside and outside in some of the legislation of the restroom, and some said, pick one. So we're gonna go the safe route and just put one in both places, including the locker rooms. And they cannot be paper that's laminated and hung up because it can't be removable. It has to be either metal or plastic and affixed permanently to the walls with screws. So I walked through the athletic area with Mr. Zolner, and we identified the areas where these need to be. And we will be ordering these and putting these up right away. So. Any questions?
Thank you. Discussion items, first reading of the 2023-24 paraprofessional seniority list. Anybody have any questions on that?
I'll just briefly speak to each of these.
Okay.
And I know this is probably something new for Tyler in particular, but per the master agreement, we are required to compile a seniority list. And this is if there were ever reductions to be made. It establishes a process that's identified within this master agreement for each of these respective groups. That's why you see a separate seniority list. They have been reviewed. I do anticipate some discussion during negotiations about each of the processes related to these, partly due in particular with the teacher seniority list, with the different tiers. We know that you can hire somebody out of a licensed area for a position if they are operating under a different tiered license. So it may change going forward into the future, contingent upon what happens through negotiations. But again, these are just the first readings of these respective lists to adhere to the requirements of the master agreement.
Okay. So we also have 10.2, first reading of the 2023-24 Secretaries, Custodians, AP, and Tech seniority list, and the first reading of the 2023-24 Certified Seniority List. Do we don't need to do anything with them?
I had the units review them. They sent me any changes, but there will be some additions or changes with staff that have already left or more that are coming on as well, so.
Okay.
Non-action at the moment.
Okay. Review chain of command chart?
You see in front of me, board members, what we've been working on to create kind of a workflow of how things will work with communications and chains of command in the district. And you can see that we have our stakeholders, school board, superintendent, off to the side, the administrative assistant, and then the Director of Business Services, Director of Technology Maintenance, which by the way, she's doing phenomenally well. And if you happen to see Mr. Marlette, he said he would probably cry for a month because Christine came here. So if you see him, you might want to bring a box of Kleenex in there, just in case.
I've seen him, and it's true.
Director of Food Services, obviously with our connection with Tahoe. Community Education, which was in conjunction with the curriculum position. I have breached that conversation, albeit slightly, with the city to talk about a potential partnership in community ed. There's some interest in discussing that a little farther, so that's good. And then the principals, and then underneath each of those respective director leadership roles, you can see the connections of the different staff members that fall underneath those accordingly. So what we're trying to do is just make it very clear on how communication flows and if there's communication needs, who's accountable where and how, and just to clarify those things so that those lines of authority are kind of followed and addressed accordingly. So still in draft format, this was shared with all staff, asking for some input and reaction. I don't know that we had any that came through, but just, again, trying to ensure that we kind of create this in our system and define our system by its structure.
So when people call us or, you know, contact us, I usually ask them if they've talked to the teacher or the person in charge, which is fine, you know, whatever. And then I tell them if they don't feel comfortable, then they need to go to principal. So then if they come to me, usually it comes, happens in here, do I tell, do I contact Todd and tell him that this is going on? Or do I just contact you and tell you, or do I tell them to contact you, or how?
Yeah, direct them, yep, through the flow.
Okay.
Yep. That would be the right flow and the right process. Because then if there's ever a situation where the board is having to deliberate a situation, the board acts as the hearing body for that. And if you get too intimately involved, you can't be non-biased as a hearing body in whatever the situation might be.
So we need to push them through Todd or Jen or you?
Yep, yep. Or if it's a concern that's brought up, let's say, I'm upset how my child did on a test. Well, talk to them, talk to the...
Teacher, yeah, the teacher, of course, is right. But that's kind of the change, according to this, yeah.
Yep, and then work through, yep. And I know at times, that gets frustrating for people because they're like, well, can't you solve it? You're elected board members, and, well, you can't solve everything. I mean, there's a process.
No, I just think sometimes people want to make sure that it's taken care of. And they feel like when they're getting pushed through all the steps, they're like, well, I just don't understand why no one's contacting, or you know, why I'm not getting, which is, you know...
Some of it's a relationship, or you have a relationship with some of them.
And it can be, and it can be.
So the first call is to you because they feel closer to you.
Yeah, you have that connection.
But we have to push them back to that, is I guess our biggest job is that.
Yeah. Well, I always check, yeah, I always check to make sure they've started the process. But it's just like, where do you, where do we, then, that's what I want to do.
So again, just still a little work in progress, but we wanted to show kind of how it's working and how we're working to create the structure, reflect the structure of what we have in place, actually, is what it is.
That's non-action also?
Right.
Okay. Resolution accepting donations. We had donations, it's not it, Peter's slow. I'm gonna make it bigger so I can read it. From the Jasper Evangelical Lutheran Church, $135 to the wellness room. And Christ the King Lutheran for $100 to the wellness room. Is that all of them? Okay, they're just the chats, okay? Just need a motion to accept these donations. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the donations from the Jasper Evangelical Lutheran Church and the Christ the King Lutheran Church to the Wellness Center. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and thank you to both of those entities. That is awesome that people give to that wellness room. I think it helps a lot of students. So that's good. Resolution of governing body or board supporting Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. You have anything to say about that, Todd, or no? Just something we do every year?
Clint testing, I think it's on...
Todd, Clint, I meant Clint. Sorry.
This is something that I learned about, too, in this process, that this is to support through the foundation of the High School Activities Association. If we have some students that need some assistance with some equipment or shoes or whatever the case is, that this is something that we receive some funding for to help support those students if they need assistance to participate.
This is just ensuring that the measure's in place. Do we have students that are...
We have, we have had students that have accessed some of these resources in the past. Yep, we have. And that's why it's great that it's a resource that we have available to tap into, so, yeah. Good question.
I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the governing board support Form A application to the Minnesota High School League Rule, or Foundation, excuse me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Declare items obsolete.
You see on your packet here, some items that have been deemed to be obsolete items. There's some chairs, there's some desks, some kitchen equipment that has been replaced. And... Chairs, desks, pizza oven that doesn't work. Rolling warmer that's been replaced, top warmer that's been replaced. So again, just obsolete items that have been brought forward for proper disposal.
Any questions on that?
What is the disposal of those?
So when they, like, we can affix a price to them. Somebody may contact us and say they're interested, like we had listed the...
Ovens.
The ovens, thank you. And we had some people that expressed some interest in purchasing them from us. Once they're declared obsolete, we post them as such, and...
Where do you list that stuff?
The website. Yes, it is on the website.
Do we do anything in the paper?
We're sometime have just reached out to people, like, The Colony buys a lot of stuff.
Sure.
You know? I mean, if it's on the website, The Colony picked up the ovens, I think. And they've picked up a lot of kitchen equipment. Honestly, they took the old freezer and rebuilt it out of the kitchen with the construction, so. But yeah, I just, I put it on the website, and I think, I know the Country Club bought an oven at one time, too. So I reached out to him saying, hey, you want a warmer? We have some coming up, so. I talked to a few people, too, but I do put it on the website as well.
Yeah, it's just a matter of trying to get rid of it.
Right, right.
Yep, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
One man's junk, another man's treasure.
Yeah, exactly. Can I have a motion, declare items obsolete?
So...
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries to declare items obsolete. Approved snow removal quotes for 2023-24. Looks like we have two quotes, one from Outlaw Customs, who've done it in the past, and then one from Will Winter. Does anybody have any discussion on these quotes? I think Outlaw Customs have done an awesome job in the past. That was my only. And it is, looks like a cheaper bid.
Had a little bit of an issue last year with that, where they ripped that...
Yeah.
On the playground thing there, but I don't know if that was really their fault. They were just trying to push that back.
Oh, I was gonna say, I think they're, yeah.
Yeah.
It got taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
Rubber ice, rubber ice service.
Yep.
Yeah, that can be expensive.
So with that, can we... So with that, can we have the janitors mark stuff better before winter sets in to try to prevent some of that, or have a discussion with them? Yeah, just trying to prevent them.
I think they were directed to go up there to go clean it off.
Okay, well, it's just.
Right.
Cody needs to have a, whoever has to have a conversation ahead of time, but the more stuff you can have marked, the better it is for everybody. Yeah, I think Brad's cheaper and.
When there's a more comprehensive bid, too, you look at all the factors that are laid out very clearly stated.
Yep.
Okay, I just need a motion to which one we want to go with.
Make a motion to do all Outlaw Customs?
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the bid for Outlaw Customs for this two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four winter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We will accept the quote from Outlaw Customs. Eleven point five, resolution requiring the tally of write-in votes, only if write-in votes are greater than the ballot candidate's total votes.
Yeah, that's a mouthful. As we know, we have a special election coming up. We've had one candidate file for election, and we do anticipate that there may not be a huge voter turnout, and what this resolution effectively allows us to do is not tally individually and handle all the write-in votes unless there is a greater number than, and this resolution just precludes us from having to do that, so.
This is new this year.
Anything else you want to add?
This is new this year. I just, I did an election webinar on Thursday, and this was, they just enacted this this year, I guess, so. Basically, it's time-saving for election judges, and which works great, you know, with you being the only one running.
Yeah.
So we don't have to tally, I mean, if it's obvious that Tyler won, we don't have to tally, and we don't have to record, and we don't have to do anything, so.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution, a resolution? So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to accept the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. Motion carries. Setting meeting date to canvas election results, November tenth through the seventeenth.
I believe we have a deadline of the seventeenth, that's why you see that window in there, so if you would pull your calendars out and take a look to see, and since this would really be the only action item, it could be a relatively short meeting if we even wanted to go on that Wednesday night, potentially at five-thirty-ish or something like that, or if you wanted to do it on that following evening, that Thursday night.
Like the ninth, is that what you're saying, or the eighth or ninth?
No, sixteen. That's between the tenth.
Sixteenth, so the following.
Yep.
You had the tenth through the seventeen.
Yep.
We can do it the tenth through the seventeenth. The tenth is actually Veterans Day observed, so you can't do it on that day.
No, that is.
So it has to go into the next week, and Dr. Willard's at a conference Monday and Tuesday, so it's just kind of why we.
No, no, that's fine, yeah.
It's the MRE conference.
Fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen.
So fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen are really.
So fifteenth or sixteenth.
Okay.
You haven't started any fall sports yet at that point, have you?
Just practice.
Practice.
So you're not.
Play sports, yeah.
And there's no, fifteenth is that church night or anything?
If we do it at five-thirty, we'll be out of here by six, if we can, if you guys approve five-thirty on that Wednesday.
I'm fine with whatever. I'm, yeah, I'm fine with that. If we do it at fifteen.
Either one of them work. Fifteen or sixteen, yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, do I have a motion to set the meeting date for canvas election results? I need the date and time.
Want to do the fifteenth at five-thirty?
That sounds good to me. Okay. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of setting the meeting date of canvas election results for November fifteenth at five-thirty, say aye.
Aye.
Those pose. Motion carries. Adjourn. So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. Meeting adjourned.